Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call to order the City of Two Rivers City Council Meeting for Monday, May 17th. Can you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call, Jamie.
Kurt Andrews.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Jeff Dalkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Jay Remicker, not here. Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
And Adam Husky.
Adam did notify me that he would be potentially late or having to unfortunately not be able to be here tonight. He's got a conflict. I have not heard anybody else here. Greg, did you hear from Jay?
I did not.
No. Okay. So we will not have, going to number four, any council members joining us remotely, as we just kind of give you an update on that. So let's move to number five on the agenda, which is the public hearing. The public hearing is on the zoning code ordinance text amendment to add limited production and processing as a conditional use in certain business districts. That will be, we'll be conducting that in the live event first with three calls. I'll explain how that works. Step up to the podium. The podium's all set with the microphones, guys. We'll step up to the podium, give me your name and address, and you can then address. We'll do three calls. After the third call, we'll then go to the phones and allow the public hearing to be handled that way. They'll also have three calls, so bear with us as we do this both virtually as well as in person. So thank you, Jamie, for getting the microphone ready. And I'll give the phone number when we're closer to getting the phone calls from the public out in the audience. So the motion is to waive the reading and adopt that ordinance, the zoning code ordinance. Does someone want to give us an update on that, with that change, to make sure that the people at home know what we're talking about again in this public hearing? Thank you, Elizabeth.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. This is an update to the business districts, B1, B2, and B3. It's adding as a conditional use, the ability to prepare things for sale in and above the retail sale process. So it allows for production and processing for businesses to expand their production ability and processing abilities, to increase capacity, to be able to do that beyond the normal retail usage. However, it adds it as a conditional use in the B1, B2, and B3, and in so doing, to make sure that we don't surpass the retail, the retail use that we want. We want to make sure that retail sell, selling is still in there. We have, as you can see in the amendment there, that any of the expansion processes of production and processing has this component of shall not exceed 1,200 square feet of gross floor area, and shall include a retail component equal to and at least 15% of the floor area of the business that wishes to proceed with this. So the other component that we have to kind of make sure that the conditional use or that it's capped down a little bit, that it will have no adverse effect around the surrounding properties. So when it's evaluated, if someone puts in a conditional use application, it will be evaluated that there are no negative externalities to those around them, and it still has the feel of a retail property, but yet allows them to do things beyond a traditional retail use. So that was the intention behind this.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Very well explained to us and the people at home. And by the way, I did get a call, so thank you for reminding me to put the mic close. If you do come up to the podium with name and address, we got a couple citizens this week said, please make sure that the folks with their backs turned to the camera, that's Greg and Jack, are on microphone when they're on microphone, so they can hear at home. And anybody coming to the podium, please make sure you put the microphone a lot closer to you, because the folks at home couldn't hear our last session. So they're just asking us to make sure that we're over-exaggerating, if you would, or getting closer to the mics. So with that said, thank you, Elizabeth, again. Again, the public hearing on that zone code ordinance change. Looking for first call, please come to the podium, my right, your left, name and address if you want to address this issue. First call. And third and final call. Thank you. Now, we'll go ahead and go to the phones. Jamie, if you're ready, I'm ready. The phone number to call in, and we'll do the same thing, three calls. We'll give you a little bit more time, because you may be having to dial a little differently. But the phone number is 920-793-5538. 920-793-5538. Again, your name and address, and you can address this issue. First call. Okay, thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance as Elizabeth just outlined for us. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance, waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion regarding this? You see none? Jamie, we need to do a roll call.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
All yeses.
Thank you. Ordinance passes, and thank you, Jamie. Let's move to number six. Again, we're looking for input from the public on anything that's on tonight's agenda, or anything you guys would like to add to future agendas would be great. Again, please, we'll start with the folks in the audience. Step up to the podium, state your name and address, and feel free to come on up. All right, we'll move to the phones. You ready again, Jamie? The number again is 920-793-5538. 793-5538. Any input from the public you'd like to address council with? Okay, we'll move on. It's a quiet night. Let's move on to number seven. Council communications, letters, and other communication from citizens. Guys, anybody want to share anything?
Yeah, I do.
Thanks, Bonnie.
I got a letter from someone about the Xander Dog Park, and they would like to see the benches repaired. It's more than just paint. They said that there's some, some of the bolts are loose and so forth, so some older people are concerned about sitting. And if you've ever gone there, a lot of people do sit, so.
I'm sure Terry Vosters, our Parks and Recreation, will take a note of that. We can get a follow-up report at the next regular meeting, so we share it with both council and the public. We'll get it out via email to council first, so you can follow up with that constituent.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
I had a person call me and was concerned that we were going to allow UTV and ATVs. She had a group of people, I told her, at this point, it doesn't look that's going to happen.
To get back on that, they might have contacted me, too. I got two emails on that and a phone call this week regarding the same issue. Pretty adamant about not having that being done, but that's, again, their points of view, which is fine. They should share them with us. Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a email from a gentleman. He was worried about, there's a property on 1208 Lowell Street, and he said that it's been vacant for 20-some years, and he's afraid that there's wild animals living in it, and he thinks there's feral cats in it now. And being that close to the school, he's worried about, because feral cats have in the litter now. They're very protective.
I think all, all the council members had, had received that. I can only say the, I'm told by inspections, the property was the subject of a citation in municipal court in December, and it is being, in light of this complaint, reexamined this week. So we can give you an update on that.
And could I just say, because I went there and I talked to a couple neighbors, the process of getting this done is part of the problem. And the guy, I'm not going to say anymore about that, but the process is part of the problem. It's lengthy. And then it, it's partly why. But anyway, you know, I was wondering, I would like to do some research, if this is okay. I think having an animal officer, maybe even at the county level, doesn't hurt, because they, the police department, and this is what they told me, okay, won't do it, but the DNR won't do it either. They say, call the police. So if you're going to have stray animals, and I do, I even see more stray animals than I have before in my neighborhood, this seems like a growing problem. So I'll say.
Okay, let's put that on the thing to get an update on as well, on that situation of that, of that memo that went to everybody regarding the abandoned property. We should get on that. It shouldn't take 20 years, so we should get on that a little faster. Any other communications from anybody? Darla?
I received a call today from a lady who lives on Jackson Street about the cross connection control program letter that people were sent. And I did refer it over to customer service, and they were going to get back in touch with her today. And basically, what it was is that she works until 5:00 PM, but they don't take appointments for people to come in and, you know, take a look at the cross, you know, see what the status is as far as cross connection. I think the latest appointment they do is 4:20. But I know our water department works with residents, so I did refer her, well, customer service was going to get in touch with her and set something up.
Thank you.
Might Mr. Blaha speak to that briefly, because I know that's not the, the only concern, although it sounds like it might be more politely expressed than what I heard the other night about the availability.
I did contact this person. Water off yet? We should never. Working with. I called the, which is the. Not a lot of overtime. Their scheduling. We'll figure out some way when. Phone number to. Working with her, and we're doing.
Thank you for that. Expect nothing less. Thank you, Russ. Any other communications from citizens? Anyone wants to share?
If I might, it was not a current complaint, but I'm not going to give the specific address, but some of you will recall, multiple complaints from the neighborhood about a 38th Street address with a lot of clutter in the yard, other things. Police Department had involvement with it. There were some delays related to matters in the courts. I, actually, Jack, Bruce, our city attorney, and I happened to be meeting here last Friday, when he had to break off our meeting and engage in a teleconference with Judge Rora at the Circuit Court on this property. The city has requested, is it a warrant of sorts, to go, the permission of the court to go on the property and clean up the remaining material that's there and bill the property owner. There were photos furnished by the police department forwarded to the court. There's a follow-up hearing, Zoom hearing, this week, Wednesday. That one.
Will be in person.
I'm sorry, it will be in person on Wednesday. That's been a matter of months. And to Bonnie's point, and on that one, it's not anything we can change in our ordinance, but it sometimes is very cumbersome. You know, you have neighbors saying, why don't you get in there and do it? Well, you know, first, the, the property owner's not cooperative. Then, for various reasons, the property owner is not in a position to go on the property. Then, the property owner thinks it's cleaned up when our staff would beg to differ. So hopefully, we'll see, at least for now, a resolution of that issue. As soon as we get, assuming the city gets the court's permission and the judge agrees that it warrants the city going in, cleaning it up, and billing the property owner, we'll have people out there doing that.
Thank you, Greg.
Some cases, that also involves coordinating with our police department for the safety of the folks. I'm not saying in this case, but in too many cases, the safety of the folks from the city that are going out to do the cleanup work, so.
Okay. If anyone else got a call or got messages, I got two other ones to report on. One is the famous newspapers in the baggies all over driveways still. I got a couple calls on that regarding, they were going on 17th Street, and they saw that there's a lot of newspapers still laying around. So I don't know if we need to just resurrect that again to our, our provider of that, as well as just remind folks that they should pick them up, so they're not littering all over the place. Those could be, those could be houses that are only summertime residence, so we'll have to figure out, how do we manage that the best way we can, so it doesn't have clutter along the way to the beach. The second one is, I talked to, I already mentioned this to Greg, but I got a letter on a recommendation. We'll add it to future, potentially future agenda items, and that is, have we looked at the golf cart ordinance to possibly consider not just residential, but possibility of businesses being able to have a couple golf carts where they could actually move people around? So it's not in our ordinance. Right now, it's only for private. It's not for, if you would, business use. But there are some businesses who are interested in being able to, whether they want to shuttle their people around, or shuttle from a hotel to a beach, or do whatever they need to do. So it's probably worth us looking at and seeing if there's a carve-out we want to consider for that or not. But she did a nice job of actually kind of outlining her vision. So that'll be on a future agenda. Those are the two additions to the group. Anything else?
That latter issue that Kurt mentioned, I expect will at least tee up for discussion as a concept.
Yes.
Next Monday for the work session. And if council is so inclined to pursue an ordinance amendment, we could have that then prepared for action at one of your meetings in June.
Thank you.
So that's often how those are handled. Concept discussion at work session, council's on board, then we bring a formal ordinance amendment for your consideration.
Okay, moving to number, if no one else has anything, we'll go on to number eight. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I still got one more from.
Okay, sorry, sir. Go ahead.
I almost forgot about it. Somebody had contacted me about, they wanted to know how much longer the mask mandate was going to be at the library. She doesn't feel that everything had been loosened up now, almost nationwide, that they should be having to make their, her little kids wear their masks there.
We have our director of the library, Jeff Dawson, is going to step up. And don't forget, that is not a, is governed by a board that oversees all of the things going on at the library, not necessarily the city.
By statute, the library board has jurisdiction.
Yes.
But Jeff has news and an update.
Yeah, there is no mask mandate at the library. Strongly recommend, so we've never aided, but, excuse me.
I want to know. Thank you. Moving on to number eight. Council reports from boards, commissions, or committees that you'd like to share. Art?
Mr. President, we had a Room Tax Committee meeting, which I think we'll talk more about later, about the pending contract renewal process. But one good piece of news from that is that the revenue for collections for Room Tax year-to-date is way up over last year.
Yes.
So it's, it's exciting to see that people are coming into rivers, spending money here and traveling. It's beginning to happen.
Last year was, to echo Mark's comments or expand on them, last year was a record year for Room Tax revenues in the city, up about 14% from the year before. We'll share some numbers with you through the end of April, which January through March isn't usually our strong season for, but come to Two Rivers. But the numbers look very, very good so far this year, and that's indicative, not just the city's collecting Room Tax, but the lodging industry's off to a good start this year.
Great. Anything else, Mark? Okay. Anybody else have anything you want to update the council on? Okay, I know there's a lot of meetings this week, so we'll probably have more updates next week. City manager report, Greg, we're moving to number nine.
Very good. First up, I'm pleased that we have a number of guests to recognize and introduce tonight. First, I'd like to invite Chief Kohlmeier up to the podium to introduce Luann Smith and recognize a very, a very generous donation from Ms. Smith in support of a city initiative. Chief.
So at the last council meeting, we talked a lot about our. One of the things we talked about at that meeting is that we would need looking for matches from others. Take off and $1,000. Luann, I just want to talk.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your donation, too. Does she get naming rights to the dog based on that donation? I was just going on record, just wondering. Okay. Okay, thank you.
It may have happened already, Chief, but a lovely picture of you and Ms. Smith together for posting, I expect, will be maybe forthcoming.
Yeah, we actually took a picture.
Awesome. Awesome. We'll be happy to share that. It's great.
Question for you. If other community citizens or members of the community want to make further donations, where do they, where do they send it?
Is it on?
Yes.
What's the procedure to contact for further donations? All right. So if you don't mind, Mr. Bitner, I'm just going to say really quickly, to repeat what I said before, so that the audience can hear it, is that last council meeting, we approved the K-9 program. One of the things that we wanted to do was have a $50,000 match from the community. Luann Smith is here tonight, and she kicked off that community match with a $10,000 donation. So that, that's for the benefit of those at home who are watching on Facebook.
In the event the applause didn't come through either, why don't we repeat that?
There we go.
And that deserves two rounds.
Yep.
You still have naming rights, by the way.
Right. So your, your question, very good question. For those folks who would like to donate to our K-9 program, you can do it any number of ways. You can come down to the police department in a cash donation. Certainly can send us a money order or a check, and/or just get in touch with us, and we'll make other arrangements. But we're off to a good start, and we hope to get things, get things going. We'll do more advertisements as time goes on, and we'll also be doing some fundraising events, as well as maybe have some items out there, like T-shirts or plush toys that folks can buy as well. So feel free to donate. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, I'd like to invite actually two folks to the podium. Pamela Stevens, the Vice Commander of American Legion Post 165, along with Terry Vosters, our Parks and Recreation Director, to talk about Memorial Day in the City of Two Rivers. There have been some questions, because it has been the decision of the, of our veterans groups not to do the full traditional parade and program this year. That does not mean that this community doesn't recognize the significance of Memorial Day and is committed to partnering with our vets group. So I happened to run into Pamela as she was selling poppies outside a Quick Trip last Thursday. I said, we could, we could use your help telling the community about Memorial Day this year. Thank you for being here.
No problem. No problem. Am I on? Okay. I'm supposed to give an address. So what I'm going to do is give an address for the Legion, which is post office box 11, and for the auxiliary is PO Box 165. We are in the month of May, which is poppy distribution time. We do a lot of distribution of those poppies in memorance of the veterans that we have lost. And Memorial Day is the last day of the month, and unfortunately, we did not get it out really quickly. But we do have an update for Memorial Day. We will be at Central Park at 8:30 in the morning on Memorial Day. We will be doing a presentation of those names that have passed from past to present. And there will be a ringing of the bell for each veteran that has passed in our county. And then they will move our, honor guard will move to Pioneer Rest, which is the old cemetery. They will be doing a three volley. To those of you that don't know what a three volley is, a lot of people consider that as a 21-gun salute. 21-gun salute is only for the President of the United States, and the three volleys are for everybody else. They will then proceed to the Forest View Holy Cross Cemetery, and again, at the flagpoles, do the three volleys. And if the city council manager would mind, I have some poppies. And if anybody in the public is unable to make a donation, or find somebody that's distributing poppies, please make your donation to the PO Box 11 or to the PO Box 165. We appreciate it.
Pamela, I'm so glad you brought those with you, because I think we'd be happy to have you circulate among the front table here.
I want to pass this.
But first, off to Terry.
Yes, off to Terry.
That's right. We don't want you creating mayhem up here while she's talking. But, but please stick around, too. I know we have people that want to donate and get their poppies. Our Parks and Rec Director, Terry.
Thank you. We just wanted to echo what the Legion is doing for the veterans as well. So we are also putting together luminaria kits that will be displayed in Central Park here on this side on Memorial Day for 24 hours. You can purchase those kits on our website for $5. We also have printed out the names of all of the fallen veterans for over the last year. Those signs were laminated and posted at Vietnam and Welsh Field this afternoon, as well as the Senior Center and the Rec Center. And tomorrow, I'll be taking those out to the cemetery as well.
Thank you. So we, as Greg said, we're still honoring those on having Memorial Day service, social distancing as we can, but we are going to have that activity. So thank you, guys.
And as always, the city's role is not to take the lead on this, but to support in every way we're, as far as I'm concerned, I expect council would agree, to assist and support in any way we are asked to, what the veterans want to do. And right now, at least the Vice Commander wants to bring our poppies by.
Absolutely.
Yep. It's a, it's a bad one over here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
That's, that's the bad one. Thank you. Let's give them a hand for everything they do for our community. Okay, Greg, we got another special guest.
The other thing is, you know, we've, our new city clerk, I'll still call her new, new city clerk and HR director, on board for about six months now, has been very actively involved with our department, has in recruitment and filling involved with our department, heads in recruitment and filling a number of vacancies, an uncharacteristically high number of vacancies, mostly due to retirements that have occurred in recent months. And the bottom line is, we've been pleased to fill those positions with some really outstanding, well-qualified people. And the two new employees being introduced tonight are very indicative of that, and we're very glad to have them here. Would like to first invite Brian Delman and Ross Blaha, his partner in crime in the utilities, up to introduce our new Water and Light Administrative Assistant.
Can you hear me? Good. Good evening. I am very pleased to introduce tonight everybody, our newest Water and Light team member, Gina Sampi. She actually joins us from Manitowoc Public Utilities after seven years. Very qualified in the utility field in both electrical and water. She's been with us now for three weeks, and she's been working with Kay Nooker, our current utility administrative assistant, who's going to be retiring in early June. So we look forward to Gina growing in her position, and we're sure she's going to be a great team player for her utility. So please welcome the welcoming Gina Sampi. What Brian said.
And while she may be housed at Electric, she will serve both departments, and Gina knows lead laterals frontwards and backwards. I can tell you, she was, we had some good discussion on lead laterals already. So welcome aboard. Thank you.
Welcome, Gina. Welcome to the cooler city.
The best commute in the world. Next up, Chief Kolmeyer, once again, to introduce our newest police clerk. This is a position that was funded as a half-time position in past budgets. Council members will remember with this year's budget, there was authorization for a full-time, recognizing the amount of services provided by our police clerks on staff.
Yeah, so we had a vacant clerk position that was vacated by Sarah Backus back in 2020. And then, of course, we created a full-time position out of that part-time. And we did a search, and we were lucky to get Susie Gripen-Trogg. So Susie is a graduate of Reedsville High School. She also is a graduate of UW Oshkosh. And we're very familiar with her because for about 18 years, she was with the Manitowoc County Sheriff's Department and Dispatch Center. So she was a dispatcher for about 10 years, and then she moved over to the sheriff's office, where she was a secretary there for the last eight years. We were lucky to snag her away from the sheriff's office and get her here. Everybody knows Susie as a very energetic and positive individual. She has a lot of experience and knowledge in a lot of the systems that we have because of the shared record systems and things. So she's an awesome addition to our department, and we look forward to many years with Susie. So introducing Susie Gripen-Trogg.
And like I told Brian, I came to Two Rivers for Brian, so it's awesome. He's an excellent chief. Guys are lucky.
Lot to live up to.
We are indeed. And he's getting a dog. You may have heard. The department's getting a dog. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Susie. Again, you hear just a summary of the work experience that these two women bring to their positions in the city. You should feel very good. A, that we're bringing that kind of talent to work for the city of Two Rivers. B, that this organization and the people that head up these departments are offering an environment that, as far as a career opportunity, with your support as a council, that's attractive to people that are well-versed in their fields and coming on board. And that's all to the good of serving this community and its residents. So not to wax too eloquent on that, but that's important. It's vitally important. So thank you for supporting, having a fair compensation and benefit package, and department heads being allowed to lead in their departments and shine. Thank you. With that, I have the more mundane aspect of my monthly report. But you know what? It starts out with some really cool news. Today, per the council's authorization, at, was that the May 16th meeting, whatever the second meeting in May was, at that meeting, you approved parameters resolutions for two borrowings. First of all, a borrowing for $1,915,000 over a 10-year term for city capital projects as included in the 2021 adopted city budget. Baird had come to the Finance Committee, and there was a presentation, I think we also shared at council. That presentation, Baird had projected a 1.97% rate on the 10-year borrowing. The parameters resolution authorized locking in pricing and the city manager to sign off on the issue if the interest rate came in below 2.5%. Indeed, the final interest rate, now, the bonds were sold at a premium, but then when bond buyers buy at a premium, they pay extra, and that money goes into debt service. But the effective debt service rate on this issue came in at 1.67%. That's the lowest borrowing rate we have ever encountered for 10-year financing. So very favorable. We were able to access bond insurance, which helped with market placement. And the debt service on this borrowing is about $40,000, over the course of the 10 years, will be about $40,000 lower than what was projected when Robert W. Baird, the company's representative, appeared at, well, at both Finance Committee and at council. That issue is summarized on the third page of this handout that I gave you just this evening. If you go to the third page there, you see the principal and interest payments on the $1,915,000. That amounts to total principal payments, of course, of that amount. Interest payments over the 10 years, $330,169 for a total debt service over the next 10 years of $2,154,740. I believe those bonds are callable anytime, boy, don't quote me on that, but I think it's January 1 of 2028 and thereafter. So in the unlikely event there's lower rates available, or the city had some extra cash kicking around, I'm not going to predict either of those, they could be paid off in full a couple of years in advance of the maturity date. And that's a quick summary. Our combined debt service with this issue and other issues for all debt that's out there is about $32 million, as shown, but very favorable rates for financing capital projects. And there are a couple of big ones coming up that I've said to the department heads, because we, you know, the council in January approved a resolution authorizing expending funds for capital projects that would be reimbursed from this borrowing. But some of the big ones, like the down payment on a ladder truck, which still needs to come to council for review and action, would like to wait until after the June 7 closing, when we have the cash in hand in our accounts, before we do some of those additional spends. This requires no further action because the parameters resolution had the necessary authorizations. The news is okay. It's not as much of a good news story on the refinancing. We have an issue out there for $775,000 in taxable general obligation refunding bonds. The issue for city capital projects is tax-exempt, and that usually gives you a rate advantage in the market because folks buy them because they're tax-advantaged. This particular borrowing had been a trust fund loan to assist with the Cobblestone Hotel development. This represents the upfront funded assistance from our Tax Incremental District, number 12. That was a Wisconsin State Trust Fund loan, I believe at 4%. The parameters resolution authorized refinancing if Baird could place it on the market at 3% or below. You see in the summary on page two here, or on my slide, if I advance it, that the final taxable interest rate obtained today on this 20, well, 18-year issue, there's 18 years left on it, is 2.96%. I don't pretend to understand interest rates in the market, but some of the recent market jitters, if you will, over inflation and other economic factors, while not hurting on the tax-exempt borrowing side, apparently are being felt in the market for taxable issues. So this one, this one came in within the parameters resolution a little bit higher than what Baird had presented as their scenario for a likely rate a couple of weeks ago. They had used 2.67%. This would mean net savings over the balance of the 18 years at $51,796 versus the $69,520 that was presented when it came to council. But again, within the parameters resolution and $51,000 and change over the course of the next 20 years, not a whole lot when you discount it with an interest rate, but it's nothing to sneeze at either. So both of these issues are scheduled for closing on June 7, at which time the funds will be wired, transferred to the city. This one, the money will be used simply to pay off the state trust fund loan. This is the new financing. Again, not extending the term of that loan. It was a 20-year borrowing. This is 18 because that's what's left on that original borrowing. And the capital projects, although we have a fair amount of debt out there for capital projects, one of the beauties, the city's leveraged, of course, a lot of grant money to make capital improvements, and far and away, most of our outstanding general obligation debt is 10 years in duration. So it's a fairly rapid payback. No action required tonight, but I wanted to share that news from our finance folks at Baird. Dave, I don't know if you had anything else, but basically, good news today.
Saving money. It's a good thing.
Yes. And reinvesting in the community.
Yep.
A good thing. Going off script here.
Greg, on that note, too, just for the community awareness, there is a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting.
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday night, 5:45. So if any of our community citizens would like to attend, it's always open to public.
Major focus of that meeting, the bringing back an updated goals listing for the coming year for hopefully council action at one of the June meetings. But yes, public is always welcome. That is council members Bittner, Andrews, and Wahuski on finance and personnel. Thank you, Mark. Next up, the discussions with the city of Manitowoc and the Manitowoc Area Visitor Convention Bureau regarding a new tourism services agreement. Two Rivers and Manitowoc have partnered for the last 15 years, pooling our room tax resources through the Visitor Convention Bureau for tourism promotion, conference and meeting promotion for our area. That partnership has taken the form of three different five-year agreements. The most recent five-year agreement runs out at the end of December, expires at the end of December of this year. We have been having some discussions with Manitowoc about some of the things Two Rivers would like to see in a new successor agreement. We've also heard some of the things the city of Manitowoc would like to see. This is an important aspect of our community development efforts that we presently basically contract out much of through the VCB. It is not an agreement that ultimately will be acted on by the city council, but will require action of the Room Tax Commission of the city. By statute, again, that's the entity that contracts for agreements pertaining to the spending of room taxes. I would point out, though, that Room Tax Commission is made up of council members Bittner, Andrews, and Bill Leclair, myself as city manager, and Jim Van Lannan Jr., the lighthouse man, as the one business sector representative, of course, from our largest lodging facility here in town. Much like our counterparts in Manitowoc, where it's the mayor, a council member, the community development director, oh, I'm sorry, the mayor, two council members, community development director, and a lodging representative. So we're working on that. We had a joint meeting of the two Room Tax Commissions and the VCB Board at Manitowoc City Hall on April 13. There have been two follow-up meetings between representatives of the two city Room Tax Commissions. Council President Andrews, who's on the Room Tax Commission, myself and the city attorney have met with our counterparts, Mayor Nichols, the Manitowoc Council President, who also sits on their Room Tax Commission, their city attorney. We met two weeks ago. We met again today. Manitowoc has a Room Tax Commission meeting that went on right after our 3 o'clock meeting. So our Room Tax Commission meets again on Thursday of this week at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall, also open to the public. There is a significant deadline coming up under the current agreement, and that is June 1. There's sort of a tripwire clause in the current agreement where if there's not a new agreement, and if none of the three parties indicate a desire to not let the agreement automatically renew on its current terms, the agreement will renew on its current terms. Based on our discussions, there are enough changes, at least, that each of the two cities want, that I expect you'll see timely action, either separately or in joint form, by the two Room Tax Commissions, saying June 1 is going to come and go. This is my prediction, based on our discussions. Doesn't mean we aren't going to continue talking, but rather than waking up on June 1 and saying, "Oh, shoot, we wanted some changes, and this thing just automatically renewed itself for five years." That's the likely scenario. So Room Tax Commission meets again this Thursday morning. The two municipalities' representatives meet again two weeks from today. That's like June something.
June 7.
Thank you. I'm forgetting my dates. Three weeks from today, then. That's right, because Memorial Day kind of lost up our schedule in between. June 7. Thank you.
I want to remind the public that this is room tax money. This is not citizen tax money. This comes out of those folks who lodge, whether they're at an Airbnb, VRBO, or any of the hotel establishments, they pay in, there's an 8% fee, they pay into the room and tax budget, if you would. Then it's our responsibility, working with the MAVCB, to use those dollars to draw people here and draw more people here to enjoy Two Rivers and Manitowoc and take advantage of all of our amenities. That's what the room tax dollars are.
Per the current agreement, about 52% of our room tax monies, likewise in Manitowoc, go to the Visitor Convention Bureau. The balance is used in our city budget. Some of it goes over to the general fund to assist with bike trail maintenance, to assist with median and traffic island maintenance, the floral plantings you see coming into Two Rivers from the south. $20,000 goes over to the city tourism fund for promotion, and that's under the, well, it's approved by the Room Tax Commission, but the Tourism and Marketing Committee has come up with that plan. There's also $20,000 in the city budget that goes for maintenance of the wayside, the Spirit of the Rivers wayside on Memorial Drive, which the city took ownership of last year. So that's basically where that money goes. As Mark alluded to earlier, the, oh, wow, good, Lisa did a chart for me. I hadn't looked at my PowerPoint yet. Like I said, we had a blockbuster year last year. Room tax proceeds up 14% in the neighborhood of $150,000. Taking a snapshot as of the end of April of this year, we stood at $37,056. End of the month, April last year, was $19,739. So we're continuing strong. I would say contributing to both years in addition to visitors and normal business travel that impacts the community. No mistake about it, the solar project, well, it was two last year, now one still under construction out at Point Beach. See a lot of those white pickup trucks from the contractors, and those are contributing to this. The other thing, while we never get into the room taxes generated by individual lodging facilities, I can tell you, looking at recent months, and this is what we've heard through COVID and nationwide, the vacation rental, the individual vacation rental homes, be it whether they're marketed through Airbnb or VRBO, that, taken collectively, those 30-some vacation rentals in Two Rivers are our largest room tax generator, and that sector is really coming on strong. There's some aspects of it, maybe as a community we don't like, that they don't put kids in the school system, they don't help us on our census numbers, but that's, there's certainly evidence, as we see the proceeds from those receipts forwarded through Airbnb, that they're having an impact, and those folks are bringing disposable income into the community. So that's...
Mr. President, thank you for adding, for the community awareness. It's not our taxpayer dollars. It's money that is generated by the hotels and all these other independent lodging operations. Two Rivers is a great location for people to come because of all the outdoor activities and other things we provide, and I only expect that to continue to grow. One of the important things is, this is very closely regulated by the state. There are things you can do with your money and things you can't do with your money. We're completely compliant using our funds. We, and also, I'm a member of the Visitor Board, our Visitor Committee, and we really feel that Two Rivers and Manitowoc together is stronger to proactively continue to manage this funding because it's a greater sum. However, we are... However, we are the smaller portion of revenue. Obviously, we're a little smaller than Manitowoc. Roughly breaks out to seventy, thirty. So Manitowoc has some demands, and we have some demands or changes we'd like to see too. Hopefully, it works out because tourism is such an important industry for our community and will continue to be an important industry.
Thank you, Mark. Quite honestly, we're focusing now, to an extent, on visitor issues and tourism issues with the City of Manitowoc that I think we've all agreed in our meetings, we need to be focusing this way, not just every five years or every three years when an agreement comes up. We need to be consistently identifying those joint goals and how to best pursue them. And we're having good discussion to that.
By the way, it's the number two income stream from Manitowoc as far as their revenue is the tourism dollars they get. That's why it's critically important for them. We might not want to be a tourist town, but we are a tourist town, and we can actually leverage that in a big way, not just Two Rivers, but the community of Manitowoc and Two Rivers. We got a lot of assets we could share and bring people here. Maybe they invest, maybe businesses come in, maybe there's good things that happen as a result.
Certainly people that have decided to move their families here that first came to know Two Rivers through the beach, or kites over Lake Michigan, or our trails. So.
I think the important thing to remember, too, is that tourism, there isn't a distinct line between Manitowoc and Two Rivers for tourists. Tourists will spend money in both communities. So we want to work hard to continue to bring tourism here to benefit both Two Rivers and Manitowoc, too.
Right. We still have the best beach, huh? I'm sorry. That was wrong, but it felt good. Thank you, Mr. President. Next up, would like to note is one of those many tourism resources, and it is a joint one with the City of Manitowoc because it's six miles of uninterrupted bicycling along the beauty of Lake Michigan. And last week, Northeast Asphalt was in town, completing a contract the council awarded last fall, finishing up a state grant-assisted project with some DNR Trails grant money, also assisted with ten thousand dollars from Friends of Mariners Trail, resurfacing between the work last summer and this final segment this spring, about a mile and a half of the three miles of Mariners Trail that lie in the city. So it's not too often you can go out and catch a quick picture of the paving crew at work with these kind of views, but it's looking good out there. And I did want to let you know that even though the meeting ended at an ungodly hour two weeks ago, I did find my way back into the office and by midnight hit the send button on the application the council authorized that evening to seek another ninety-five thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars to resurface the balance of the trail segment in Two Rivers. I'm not sitting here guaranteeing we'll get it, but we at least did submit the application. It's under review by DNR. There's the cover sheet to the application, which, yes, Lisa, my assistant, took care of during the day last Monday. But that went in, and if we were able to land that, which would be for funding for the period twenty twenty-one to twenty-three, that would allow us, with city match, maybe some help from Friends of Mariners Trail, to have completely resurfaced that segment of the twenty-two-year-old plan, trail, that is within the city limits. So keep your fingers crossed there. The other thing we need to be looking at in the next few years along there is some grant funding assistance, community fundraising for replacement of that split-rail fence that's also twenty-two years old. Some of it's leaning a little toward the lake. I don't think it's necessarily just the fence moving. I think that lakeshore has moved a little with the high water. And it's an old fence. The blessing is there's good under drainage out there. So anyway. And remember, this is the first year in two years that Highway forty-two has not been detoured due to Waldo Boulevard. It's open, they can let her rip this summer. So that's my update on that. There is, you might have noticed, this foundation poured by our city crews just in the last few weeks. That is the city's contribution to a project that a couple of local Eagle Scouts are pursuing. Coleman Slattery came to the Advisory Rec Board and to the Friends of Mariners Trail Group, and then we reported at city council last summer proposing to build a pergola out there, a pergola structure on a stretch of the trail between the northernmost wayside and the Lighthouse Inn, where it's kind of a long stretch between resting spots. And a fellow Eagle Scout candidate from Two Rivers, Joaquin Guines, has been in touch with the rec director and will be coming to a future Advisory Rec Board meeting to talk about park furnishings, two picnic tables that he wants to, is designing and constructing, one of them being handicap accessible to go underneath the pergola. And I've let both young men know that we would like to have them at a future council meeting for an information presentation on what they're planning to do. And this is a rendering that was provided last summer by Coleman Slattery for his project. So it was originally going to be cedar. It may be treated pine now, given lumber prices, but nonetheless, the plans are moving ahead. And I believe he's still actively soliciting donations for the project. And architecturally, it's pretty cool. It should be a wonderful addition. That's the kind of community ownership, you know, fifty-some gardens, pergolas. Friends of Mariners Trail's given up on taking bench donations up there because you can only sit down like every fifty yards or so. People love the trail and they've donated generously. So thank you to those Eagle Scout candidates. The Splash Pad and Ice Rink Planning Committee, which is now dubbing itself Central Park Three Sixty-Five Planning Committee, by the way, if you were bad at geometry like me, that doesn't mean circle, because remember, that's three hundred sixty degrees. The real emphasis is to pursue improving Central Park and making it a year-round focal point and destination and activity center for the community. And I welcome Tracy's comments on that because I see her nodding over there, and she had her first official meeting on May sixth as one of the council liaison. But they had a very good meeting once again on May sixth. The committee expressed strong preference, well, there were three conceptual plans that Blake Thyssen from Park Architecture Consultants presented. The committee very strongly embraced the third plan, which is the most ambitious plan, the most cool plan, I think, as well. And I'll show you that on the slide that follows. The next meeting of the committee is Thursday, June third, at six PM, first Thursday of each month. The committee will now be reviewing refined conceptual plans and preliminary cost estimates specific to this design concept. Doesn't mean it doesn't change, but it means they're trying to hone the process in. So by June, July at the latest, a recommendation can come back to the council as to the plan to be pursued over there. And that's going to have to capture the community's imagination and have an element of magic to it. We aren't sitting here saying this is going to be fully funded by city government by any means, but, you know, make no small plans, and this committee has embraced the idea. Tracy, did you have any comments? I'm going to pull up the concept plan as well.
Yeah, they, look, of the three, even though it's the most ambitious, there was suggestions by the committee for some changes. So did Justin give back to you?
Yes, and actually, I've got the.
Okay. So, but it was great. They were an enthusiastic bunch, and I think if they are typical of the residents in this town, it'll get done and it'll be done well.
Right. You know, honestly, not to throw it out for shock value, but to fully do this plan is, I don't have numbers from the consultant, it's going to spoil the looks of a million dollars. On the other hand, guess what? We got a community house that the city made a commitment to. The community raised over five hundred thousand dollars for it to qualify for our West Foundation Challenge grant of two fifty. A lot of people said it couldn't be done. It was done. It really is about, does the community embrace it? Is it a worthy project? Because that's often how things get done. This isn't a final plan, but the concept from south to north would relocate the band shell, a new band shell, not moving the band shell out of Central Park, but the idea is to move it to the far north in order to better utilize all of the space in the park, have it face south, so like it does now, the entertainment focus to the south, audience area to the south. What's shown in the center there, the brown building, would be a very upscale, well-designed concession area for when you're skating and you need skates or hot chocolate or something in the summer, with restroom somewhere in it. Those restrooms might migrate somewhere else, like to the back of the stage, because no matter how pretty a restroom is, I mean, at least this is Greg's opinion, you don't necessarily put it in the middle of the park. But that's shown, you see a very clear symmetry with the, I won't call them sidewalks, but the two concrete corridors that would, on the north end, become part of the gathering area for the stage, and on the southerly area is also wide enough for some gathering space. We are eager to hear more from Blake about the concept of artificial ice because that would allow the skating area, as depicted to the south, in the cold weather months, to overlay the splash pad without freezing up all of the components that would be underneath it, and would allow for an extended season. We need to learn a lot more about that, but one thing we do know, even in Two Rivers, recent years, it's been hard to keep ice consistently through a winter. So we need to learn more about the artificial ice concept. And then shown where point number two is, near the center of the park, just about square in front of the community house, an area for the splash pad. So a lot more discussion. Doesn't say it can't be done in phases, revisited, but the committee is really looking at that amazing piece of ground that we spend, that so much happens on, and saying, if we have a dream, if we have a vision, what would we like to see there? So.
Greg, I'd like to add, I don't think we can emphasize enough, too, it's a great vision, a great future plan, but look at the return it brings in terms of economic development to creating activity, destinations, things to do downtown. People will come, more people will come than previously have come, and they'll be hungry, they'll need something to drink, and they'll shop, and they'll utilize our downtown, the heart of our downtown, Central Park.
We always share concepts at some risk, you know, there's always things to be tweaked, but I think it's good to know the committee's, they're putting some real quality thought to it, and I've been impressed with those meetings. Yeah. So thank you. More to come. And down the right-hand side, just some renderings of some of the, some bandstands that our design consultants have shared. You see a lot of them that emphasize a lot of exposed wood on the understory. Stone could complement the stone of the community house. Similarly, some special lighting effects around the skating area at the bottom. The idea that that area could pop and be a center for activity year-round. Enough of my speech on that. On the more mundane things, but pretty important, infrastructure. Twenty-fourth Street Reconstruction Project, again, the water and sewer mains are done for all except the area from Adams to Jefferson, and they are being installed in that area now. And for the balance of the project, most of the sanitary and water service laterals are tied into the new mains. Paving with luck, that's, I know Jim told Lisa to put that in there, in late June. Crewshet Construction got an early start on this. We had a couple bumps along the way, we know, but the good news is people aren't going to be worried about whether the project gets buttoned up before snow flies. It'd be more like, does it get buttoned up before Fourth of July fireworks? So that's that one. Advanced Construction was the low bidder for the projects on Twenty-Fifth Street and Madison Street. There was a neighborhood information meeting a couple of weeks back, well-attended. There are no tree or street width issues on these streets, and that's good. And, let's see, should start sometime with contractor mobilization sometime next week. So we'll keep you posted. Between these two projects, there are also about a hundred lead water service laterals getting replaced, so we keep picking away at that. And there are also eighteen scattered service locations for lateral replacement. Staffing updates, you met the two ladies this evening that are joining the utilities and the police department in two weeks, three weeks, first meeting in June. You'll meet Justin Meyer of Two Rivers, who started last week in the position, oh, started today, thank you, Jamie, in the position of wastewater treatment plant operator. And I understand the top candidate has been identified and has accepted the offer for the vacancy, to fill the vacancy in the full-time recreation clerk position. Thank goodness, just in time for summer and boosting Facebook ads and helping people with registrations. So that person hopefully will be on board and be introduced at the meeting in three weeks. The police department is recruiting for a full-time police officer, and Police and Fire Commission has addressed a lieutenant promotion as well. So some staffing changes and promotional changes coming in the PD. Would remind folks that the Manitowoc Symphony Orchestra is doing a concert under the theme Healing the Community this coming Saturday, May twenty-second, at Capital Civic Center. Performance is at two PM and seven thirty, I believe. In addition, tickets being available for the public, two hundred fifty tickets at each performance are being reserved for first responders, police officers, firefighter, paramedics, nurses, paramedics, medical professionals. And the availability of those tickets is being publicized. Mayor Nichols will be handling some greetings and comments in the two o'clock performance, and I'll be representing the City of Two Rivers, thanking the, as I'd term them, the angels among us that we've come to appreciate so much more over the past year, year and a half, at the seven thirty performance. Peggy Pitts from the symphony has been pretty integral in arranging and promoting this. Also, picking up on what you heard earlier from both Vice Commander Stevens and Terry Vosters, if you would wish to honor a fallen service member, a veteran, or an active-duty member of the military with a luminaria, contact the Parks and Rec Department for a five-dollar donation. A luminaria, red, white, or blue, will be placed in Central Park for display over Memorial Day weekend. And again, whoops, we will have Veterans Day in the fall, we're observing Memorial Day in May. Sorry about that. That, again, there will be a bell ceremony and the reading of the honor roll. Is that at eight thirty, actually, in Central Park? Okay, I apologize again for that error. Then the three volley salute will be provided to honor those that gave all at the old cemetery, then the new cemetery immediately thereafter. We'll get a reminder out to council, though, with the right time. It's still, I would really encourage our city representatives, not a parade this year, but to be present for that ceremony out in Central Park, eight thirty, eight thirty. Would just again remind you that if you want the most current, complete, up-to-date information on Two Rivers activities and events, it just keeps growing and getting better, explore tworivers.com. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any legislative or intergovernmental updates that you want to share?
You know, oh, thank you. Thank you for asking. We're continuing to monitor the state budget, of course, to see what happens there. We've shared our, the council's shared revenues resolution with Andre Jacques and Shay Sortwell. We are supposed to be getting more information shortly on the so-called American Rescue Plan funds distribution for small metros. Still not getting any satisfactory answers on why the metro communities are getting so much more, except their votes are more in alignment with the party that controls the Congress right now, and I'm not saying, it works both ways on that, we know. So we're watching that because half of the one-point-one million dollars allotted for Two Rivers is supposed to come down fairly shortly, in the next month or two, I think, from the state. If you're a non-metro community, the money goes to the state, which then releases it to the locals. If you're the larger metro communities or counties, and county's still getting fifteen million, Darlette called me today to confirm that, good for them, that's coming directly to those larger units. The other thing I did get today from Representative Sortwell's office, a preliminary draft of what would be the latest version of the dredging bill, which he and Senator Jacques have been pursuing, largely on behalf of Two Rivers, based on our experience. I forwarded that to our city engineer, Mr. McDonald, also to Brian Hinrichs at FOTH, who's been instrumental in getting our harbor funding. I'm not sure on a first read if this does everything we want or not, but we will get comments back to the representative by next Monday, which is when they requested them. So kudos to Andre and Shay. They're both working on this on behalf of Two Rivers' interests.
Greg, the, I heard that the American Rescue Plan Wisconsin was reduced seven hundred million, and it was, the rescue money was going to be allocated over, not one year, but over two years. Has there been any update on the million five? Is there any changes in our figure at this point?
As far as I know, everything I've seen right now is still at a million one. I did see where the total amount available to the state of Wisconsin is down seven hundred million dollars from the initial, and I'm sorry, quick read of that, it sounded like that was mostly money flowing to the state, but I, it ain't over till it's over on this one. Yeah. It still bears watching.
Hey, thank you, Greg. Thank you, guys.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, the other thing, if I might, Mr. President, we just, last week, Elizabeth, our community development director, shared with me, Senator Baldwin's office has issued a request for earmarks that local communities might desire. office has issued a request for earmarks that local communities might desire for capital projects. Not a lot of time to respond, it's due by this Friday. Our intent as staff, and this does not bind the city, but would be to submit the project that we submitted for the DOT multimodal funding program, excuse me, in January of 2020, which was a pretty extensive seawall rebuilding from the Washington Street Bridge, including city-owned property, the former riverfront liquor, where there is no seawall right now, just a rubble bank, through the intervening private property, if the city could get the proper easement or ownership, and inclusive of all of Lot F, or hopefully the soon-to-be-named park, because I need to bring that recommendation to council. That was consistent with the FOTH JJR plan for that East Gateway Corridor. Not the fancy stuff, but the fundamental infrastructure required there. It just, given the short timeframe, it's a fairly easy, off-the-shelf, if you will, project. It was about, estimated at about $2.5 million. So we will be submitting that as a suggested earmark, a requested earmark. I would love to say we were in a position to submit for the outer harbor reconfiguration, but as you know, we haven't been able to get funding through the core as yet for the design. And it's kind of hard to apply for construction money for something that hasn't been designed yet. So I did want to share that. Sometimes we just have to take a swing at these, somebody just came for this, would fit, just like at the ballgame, Adam just came for, sometimes, you know, it comes in and we got to take our best swing at it. So, anyway, that finally concludes my intergovernmental update.
Thank you. By the way, did you win?
No.
Darn, sorry to bring that up.
Two Rivers didn't fare well at Chilton last week.
It wasn't on the agenda, I apologize. Consent agenda, we've got a few things to go over. One, presentation of minutes, regular city council minutes from April 19th, and May 3rd, and the reorganization of April 20th, 2021 work session, that was April 26th. The motion is to waive the reading and adopt those minutes. Application and petitions, there are three. The first one is Manitowoc County Mariners. There's football games, there are a bunch of them scheduled. There's one note that Greg gave me a heads-up on, that the July 17th is going to have to potentially be shifted. We're going to approve that tonight, or the application petition, but that date may shift, correct, because of the Fishy Derby?
Right. That Mariners game on the 17th, that's Fish Derby Weekend. Nancy Richter, who I think most of you know, longtime co-chair, at least on that event, was in touch today. The rec department was in touch with the Mariners. They're looking at their options for relocating either to the City Field by McGee School, where they've had a couple games, very well-attended this year, or to a location in Manitowoc. And we are tourism partners, but we'd rather keep them here. Would ask that council nonetheless approve this application, noting that the location would be the City Field next to, I say Canig, McGee, next to McGee School, where the Junior Ramblers play. In the event they're there, you've approved a license. In the event they're in Manitowoc, they won't need a Two Rivers license, and it won't be issued.
There you go. Thank you, Greg, for that clarification. B is Two Rivers Fish Derby, which I just mentioned, which is for July 16th through the 18th. And then we have friends of Two Rivers Snow Fest, the Snow Fest activities, so they're looking for that from July 23rd to the 25th, and that should be a lot of activity going on in our city this summer with that. Recommended action here is a motion to approve the applications and authorize the city clerk to issue those licenses. The second thing in application petitions is the application for an operator's license, and that came through the police department as a recommendation for denial. You have that document in your package as to why the motion to deny our application was based on the recommendation from the police, city, the chief of police. The third one is reports. We've got nine minutes of meetings, motion to receive and place those on file. We've got 11 department reports for April 2021, motion to receive and file those as well. And last but not least, a summary of the verified bills for the month of April 2021 for $3,633,357 and 61 cents. A motion to receive and place that on file. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various action items recommended. I have a motion.
President, I'll make a motion to receive, approve the consent agenda, various actions recommended.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Any discussion?
Just a note, that beverage operator license recommended for denial is a new application, so there's not the need to address the right to hearing, which somebody would have if they were applying for a renewal, and that was denied by council. Just FYI, sometimes we have to afford the opportunity for hearing, but that's only on renewals that are denied.
Understand. Any other discussion?
I'd like to, um, the Fish Derby is having bands play till 10:30 or 11:30, but the Snow Fest has 11:30 to midnight. I don't want to vote for that, because we've always let them extend an hour of music, but I, I don't know, midnight is pretty, I think that's a long time.
Well, the good news is that's further on in the agenda tonight, and we'll be looking at what the resolutions or ordinance adjustments or changes potentially are, and we can vote on that accordingly. Any other comments regarding the consent agenda and the motion to approve this? Okay, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's move on to number 11, city council formal items. Tonight, hold on, we've got a ton of resolutions and a ton of ordinances in the agenda tonight. And we're going to keep Jamie very busy. The first one is a resolution adopting 2022 and 2024 Commercial Port Annual Statement for Intentions for Submittal to Wisconsin's Department of Transportation Harbor Assistance Program. The recommended action there is a motion to waive the reading and adopt that resolution. That resolution is in your packet, and I'm trying to find the page number for this.
Page 111, Mr. President.
Thank you. Got a lot of stuff in our packets tonight. Thanks. Page 111.
If I might offer a little background on this, I'm sorry. The Wisconsin Harbor Assistance Program, or HAP program, which is through the Department of Transportation, is intended to assist commercial port activities. In recent years, in Two Rivers, it helped with the construction of the improvements at Harbor Park, which is both recreational and commercial, but the selling point there was that it enhanced Two Rivers' status as a harbor of refuge off the Big Lake, and also has been used on occasion when ice conditions didn't allow for, for the fishing fleets to tie up and load and offload when it's a really rough lender for the ice. Of course, we also need to redo the harbor, or you'll get battered if you tie up there when it's stormy, but that's, that's another issue. The HAP program also assisted, I think it was 2016, the year that the city actually, as opposed to the Corps of Engineers, the city actually contracted for the dredging of the harbor, because there wasn't federal money there. HAP funded 80% of that dredging project. More recently, in Manitowoc, it's helped with some of the dock wall improvements for the big shipyard crane that they're building and work at the car ferry docks. It's a great infrastructure program administered by the state. A prerequisite for applying for any funding, and it's an August deadline each year, is that there be a current resolution identifying a statement of intentions for potential projects. This resolution is accompanied by some rather awkward forms that are online from DOT, and we, there's a couple blanks, I realize we didn't catch on these. If you go to page 112, which is right behind the resolution, it's proposed that possibly dredging the West Twin River from its confluence of the East Twin up to the Railroad Swing Bridge, not something that we're proposing to do tomorrow, but feels should be in the plan, that should be identified, at least as staff recommends it, as a third priority. You see that blank in the lower right? That would be a third priority. That, in round numbers, is identified as a $1.5 million project. 20% city match would be $300,000. The next project listed, starting on page 114, would be reconstructing the seawall on the West Twin River adjacent to Twin Cities Marina, which, again, would aid a commercial business if that improvement was made. Existing seawall over 40 years old and failing, that is properly identified, at least as a second priority. Total estimated cost, $100,000, 20% would be $200,000 city match.
I'm sorry, you said $100,000, the city match is $200,000?
I beg your pardon. A million dollars, I slipped a digit there. Thank you. A million dollars and $200,000 would be the 20% local share. I would suggest we rearray these attachments so they go first, second, third priorities. The first priority, and again, this still needs to be designed, but is that reconstruction of some manner of surge protection at the harbor mouth. We're spitballing that at a $4 million estimated project cost. 20% of that would be a, an $800,000 local cost. Again, we may end up trying to use this to get some help on design as opposed to construction, because that still needs doing, but I think these are still, these still fairly represent some of our harbor improvement priorities that relate to commercial uses. Now, again, I don't want to be scary with those matching numbers, which are pretty big. The last time we did dredging and had the 20% local match, it was an in-kind match, because the city several years ago, when the 2016 dredging was going to be done, built a dredge spoils disposal area out on undeveloped land by the Woodland Industrial Park. And while we want to reuse the nice clean sand from the mouth of the river, if you're dredging that far up the West Twin, odds are we're going to want it to go somewhere other than the beach, because it's going to have a lot of organic, a lot of sediments in it. The others are really contingent on what happens with properties like Twin Cities Marina, that is close to an existing city TIF district, that if there was some development happening, could assist it. And then, then there's the big, the big issue that we really need to keep, keep and increase pounding on the table for, with the harbor entry, because that harbor entry, and Bill can speak to it with the Leclerc family with fishing, and testified to that in Madison, in, what's that, January this year, in Darla as well. You know, we get battered with surge off the lake because of the way our harbor opening is oriented, and we get the shoaling with the lake sand being pushed up into the channel, so it has to be dredged every time you turn around, every three or four years. So that's still a big kahuna on this list. With that, I'd recommend approval of the resolution, reordering the projects so they're listed as priority one, two, and three in the attachments.
Okay, and I did my math correctly, I think it's $1.3 million we would have to come up with, the 800, 200, and 300, if all three of these were to be done.
If we were fortunate for all three.
Right, yep. Okay, just want to put that on record. And again, we're not approving the expenditure of those dollars, we're just approving the resolution to get this thing in front of somebody to help us figure out what we can or can't do, and ask for money.
Yep, this is due into DOT, not later than the 15th of June.
Okay, so with that said, I'm looking for a motion to approve or to adopt the resolution, changing the order of the priorities of the harbor design first, and then followed by the seawall second, and the dredging third.
Dredging third.
Thank you. So do I have a motion in that order?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Any discussion regarding this?
And Mr. McDonald's available if you have questions on the projects.
Thank you, Jim, for standing by. Mark, you have a question?
First of all, I think, Greg, this money is allocated by the state based on commercial activity, too.
Exactly. It has to benefit commercial activity. You got to make a case that benefits commercial. If it was purely recreational boating, we'd have to be knocking on the door at DNR's recreational boating fund or others.
Which does kind of put Two Rivers at a disadvantage, because we don't have a lot of commercial activity on the river system, right?
Correct.
All right. The, I've got three questions. My second question is, the estimated one and a half for the harbor dredging activity initially, does that include, and I know we're looking at and trying to make, except, does it include the additional cost of having to dredge away, dredge the sand that we do take out of the river to a landfill that we ran last year, or several years ago, we ran, the cost?
Again, Jim can address it. I expect, it does, it does reflect that, because this isn't, this isn't clean sand that Lake Michigan pushed into the mouth of the harbor. This is more waterborne sediment that's come downstream, but.
This will look more like fertile.
Jim, can you grab the microphone, please?
Hold the microphone on.
Make sure it's on.
I think that's on. Yeah, this, this may have a lot more nutrients in it, so it would need to go to one half of the facility out there.
But it depends on where the, where it is dredged in the river. The closer to the mouth, the less likely it would have to go, and we may get across, or get the exception on that, is that true?
Pretty much so, yes. As we get to the outer harbor, it's mostly sand, and it can go pretty much anywhere. The inner, further upstream you go on either river, it can become a lot more sediment from runoff.
Organics?
And the third question I have is, you know, the whole cause of this problem is the pure design, the levy design in the lake itself. Share with me the difference between state and federal involvement in that levy design, and how they'll give money if it is skewed through federal.
And I had a little review of this with Brian Hinrichs from FOTH last week, who was in, along with a new fellow who'll be taking on his duties. In a perfect world, what we've been striving for is the Corps of Engineers would fund a, what they call a design deficiency analysis, to determine, is there something inherent in the design of, as I understand it, in the design of our harbor that's causing the problem? Kind of hard to dispute, I think. It, you know, the, the harp, channel opening comes straight out to the, kind of the south, southeast, and it gets battered by storms in the fall and what have you. If it was found to be due to the inherent design of the federal structures, there'd be a possibility of 100% federal funding for it. If that solution also means extending further out into the lake, it would take federal government action as well. It actually would require congressional approval in some Water Resources bill or something. We've struck out two times now, going to the Corps with, Corps of Engineers, with letters of support signed by Ron Johnson, Tammy Baldwin, and Glenn Growth, whose names you don't necessarily see a lot on the same piece of paper, and bipartisan support, and have not seen funding. So it, alternatively, we might have to look at a scenario where the city and/or state come up with some matching funds, the funds for, there's a Corps of Engineers Planning Assistance to States program, excuse me, which paid for a study, some of you might remember, that was done about four or five years ago, where they put a couple of Doppler units on the, one on the bottom of the channel by the Coast Guard, went out at the harbor entry to track currents and sand grain movements, and they did some modeling, but it wasn't sufficiently conclusive in the Corps' eyes to warrant going with a full-blown design. So, and frankly, with this discussion of a national infrastructure bill, who knows what might come down? So I hate to sound so vague, but it could range from 100% federal funding to a combination of federal, state, and local funding. And I'd like to think if, if we had to come up with state and local resources, we could knock on the door of both, this is my real preliminary thought, of both the HAP program, because those commercial fishermen rely on that harbor entrance, and other limited commercial activity, but also the recreational boating fund, because we are a recreational harbor with sport fishing and what have you. It's a big bill, it's a big project, vitally important. There's probably more one than one way to skin the cat, but we, we need it.
So what you're basically saying is this doesn't prohibit us from asking, or possibly going back to the Army Corps for more funding to be able to get that, or federal funding?
Correct.
This just happens to be an application that is available now, potentially, or we have to by August, that would allow us to look at at least state funding with some matching grant. We're not approving spending that kind of money right now, but we're looking at all alternatives to fix this problem we got.
And I don't know how, how much it would gain us, but even if we don't apply for HAP funding, I don't think it hurts if we're applying to another funding source and say, this was identified by council action as one of our top three projects.
Fair enough. Any other discussion?
Is the, one last question. The American Rescue Plan, did that give, free up any money at the federal level that might be available for the federal to address that across another state?
Not to my knowledge on anything I've seen come down so far. Now, maybe some of that money's working its way into this magic earmark process. I didn't mean that sarcastic, well, maybe I did a little sarcastically, but it may be funding some of this interest in earmarks, but we've not heard of any programmatic initiatives that are about harbor infrastructure, other than the normal appropriations through the WADA, the Water Resources Development Act, which is an annual appropriation of what actually are trust fund monies from port fees that help fund federal improvements.
Any other questions regarding this resolution?
Yes, Jeff?
When you checked on these before with, with Army Corps, were there grants available?
When you checked on these before with Army Corps, were there grants available like this? I mean, is it possible to leverage this, saying, hey, it's not going to cost federal governments so much anymore, money out of their budget?
It might. It might. Like if we went, I'm getting a little out of my element because I've done homework on it recently, Jeff, but if, say there's, call it $300,000 by now for doing a deficiency study, is it possible we could leverage this money as match for the federal money or as part of the match?
Right.
I can give you a big maybe on that. Yeah, it might very well help.
I think all of us would encourage every rock to be looked at underneath each rock for.
And I don't know, Jim, any other observations? It's just, grab it where you can on this.
I'll point out that we need our harbor, and although it's a federal channel, the city with funds from the state has dredged it twice, and the Corps twice, so we need to work on it, too.
And harbors get priority based on commercial tonnage. So it may not be pretty, but if you're shipping out rock, it's a good thing.
Fish?
Even when the fishing's good, doesn't make for a lot of tonnage.
You've got to be heavy fish.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
The Boston Whaler phenomenon with formerly Twin City Marines is the reason that river is considered commercial at this point?
It is a commercial activity. Good point.
Manufacturing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Charlie fishermen, they would fall under the classification of commercial, too, wouldn't they?
Okay.
Okay.
Perhaps.
Any other discussion? Seen on, Jamie, we've got a roll call here on this resolution.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
All yeses.
Thank you. We're going to go to the next one, B, which is the ordinance to amend municipal code section 1-2-1 entitled Fees to amend the Code sections for tower fees. The code sections were incorrectly listed during the 2020 code codification process, and does anybody want to address that before we go into the motion and the ordinance on what was corrected? Amy with EPU?
Could be, but I don't know.
Okay. Why? Did you correct the, were you the one who found it, or is it Elizabeth?
Lisa found it, I believe.
Okay, Lisa found it. She's not here.
You know what? I've got to say, Mr. Chairman, though, as I look at it, and maybe, I've not paid a lot of attention to this, but it talks about code section on fees, 121 rings true. Right. But then the amendment talks about 10-124, which is the zoning code, and the zoning code cannot be amended without a public hearing. So I'm not, I'm sorry. Page 118. Apologies, I hadn't looked real closely at this because I chalked it up as well. It was another thing that didn't get caught in what was a wholesale recodification, but this.
So can I get a motion to table this so we can go back to the next meeting? And do I have a motion to table this item?
I make the motion to table this to the next.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor of table it to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll just do that and move on. Noise ordinance waiver, C, request, and this goes back to Bonnie's earlier point, noise ordinance waiver request for Two Rivers Snowfest for Friday, July 23 until 11:30 p.m. on Saturday, July 24 until midnight. So 24th, they want till midnight, on the 23rd, they want till 11:30. They want to waive the provisions of Section 9-2-5B to B regarding the noise audible within an enclosed structure used for residential purposes and Sections 9-2-5D pertaining to vibration. So that's in front of you. It's on page 120. It came to us from the Friends of Two Rivers Snowfest, looking for just those two nights to extend the noise ordinance.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, we gave you as the next item for backup to this and to the other waiver that's requested, an excerpt from the current noise ordinance. In the old days, not too long ago, this would have simply been a waiver to allow amplified noise audible beyond the park, beyond the property line after 10 o'clock, I'm looking for, after 10 o'clock, and it was simple. We no longer have that provision in the ordinance. You might recall, there've been several amendments to the noise ordinance, so now we have, and it's cited in this pretty lengthy way this was listed on the agenda, it would mean waiving the provisions of 9-2-5B to B regarding noise audible within an enclosed structure used for residential purposes. You remember the discussion, if you're inside your house and all the windows are closed and you can still hear the sound or the music, it's a violation. So that would need to be waived, and also Section 9-2-5D pertaining to vibration. Again, if you can, if structural elements of your house or your furniture are vibrating because of noise from off your property, that's considered pretty much prima facie violation. So the decibel standards, which have never been waived on these items in the past, would remain in place, and for all zonings other than residential or commercial industrial, that's 75 decibels, both where it's generated and where it's heard. So 75 decibels stands as the limit, and that's been in the ordinance for a long time. That has historically not been waived, but you're not waiving the old provision that was, if you can hear it off past the property line after 10 o'clock, you're waiving the ones about audible inside your house with the windows closed, or vibration. Sorry to make that long-winded, but I think, based on the current ordinance language, that's the nature of the waiver that council's going to be asked to act on. And I know Chief and I had a brief discussion on that last week. I think I got it square on here. Chief concurs.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the request as submitted by our Friends of Snowfest.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion?
So I want to understand, because I know we've always had this before for these events where people, I mean, some people don't want it to go even past 10:30 or so. So you're saying that there, we're allowing them to, for their bands to play till midnight or 11:30?
Well, that's the issue that's in front of council.
Eight's 11:30, one's midnight, just to clarify.
Oh, good point, because the agenda said 11:30.
Yep. One is 11:30 on the 23rd.
I know, I said 11:30 or midnight.
Yes.
But I'm just saying that the other one, they specifically said their bands were finished. They're asking to be allowed to go on till 11:30, but they specifically said their bands would be finished at 10:30. So these bands can play till 11:30 p.m. or midnight.
Okay. Help me out, Bonnie. Which request was that, where they talked to them?
The fish derby.
Okay.
They said that their bands were going to be finished at 10:30, and I know that, I'm sure talking after 10:30 might be disturbing to some residents, but it's not quite the same as a band playing.
And with this waiver, frankly, if the band gets, you know, gets a few, has a few encore rounds, they could play until 11:30. So I don't know if they anticipated just the crowd noise or the fact that, well, sometimes you have a cutoff time for the band and things don't work out that way.
So I just want to be clear, we're talking about the Friends of Two Rivers one right now, and it has no provision in here that says the band's going to stop at 10:30. That's the fish derby one, which we'll get to next.
Correct. Thank you.
So this one is clearly 11:30 and 12. They might be playing till 11:30 and 12. Nowhere did they say the band's going to stop early. Okay? That's what we're voting on right now. So I want to make sure we're clear. That was the motion, that was the second.
Noise ordinance waiver till 11:30 on Friday, midnight on Saturday.
Right. Any other discussion? Chief, do you want to say something? Grab a microphone. Thank you. The audience couldn't hear you whisper to Mr. Buckley, so.
The only other issue would be, and don't quote me on this because I don't know for sure, but I think historically, usually, I think the ordinance waivers have gone to 11. And then the other thing that you may need to take into consideration, that once you start going beyond 11, the parks closed. That very well may be, but the parks close at 11, so you might have to make some kind of adjustment there to go beyond 11 o'clock.
Okay, not that we have pressure on us, but I saw the postings of Friends of Snowfest, and they got all 17 bands already listed, and what time they're playing and where they're playing. So we're just trying to catch up. I know it's not, they didn't ask this change before they put the poster out, but it's out there. Adam?
I think it's great. I mean, it's only summer. We don't deal with this every week out of the year, every weekend out of the year. It's music in the middle of summer when we attract tourism. I say bring it on. Let's have some fun. I mean, it's a couple of weekends.
Nights.
Right. Well, I mean, as far as a couple other noise ordinances that we approved and one coming up, it's only a couple of weekends. But this one in particular is right, two nights.
Yeah, I'm just bringing attention to the things that you might have to make adjustments for so that we're not running into something when people call.
Understand. And if there's things we have to adjust based on what you just brought up, please bring that forward to us so we can make sure we're in compliance with all of the modifications that need to be done. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Is it a problem to adjust the hours of the park, then, Chief? I mean, is that?
You have the power to do that.
I have the power to do that.
Yes. I just briefly consulted with the city attorney, though. If we determine the park closure ordinance needs to be waived as well, that's not listed on the agenda. So it's specific to noise ordinance. We'd be happy to bring it back next week, Monday.
I think you're going to have to, based on what I'm hearing.
And get it done. And you know what?
Is that ordinance, is that, if we waive it, Jack, is that something we can do as an exception for a particular event, or does that ordinance have to be waived in total?
No, I think we have to waive it.
Okay.
Jack, you've got to talk to the microphone, please. Say it again for the audience.
That would apply to a particular event.
Just like the noise ordinance.
Yes.
And I think where I was getting confused at the times is that a lot of these events, what they'll do is they'll shut down the alcohol or the music, usually within a half hour of each other, so that way it kind of winds things down for the night.
Adam, your question?
Did we go through any of that before? Because, I mean, the fish derby's been running forever, and I think they've pretty much had the same time, so if they're going to 11:30, we never had a waiver before.
Yeah, I can't answer that off the top of my head. I don't know. I wasn't part of the process of the waivers prior to, so I can't say. I seem to think that the derby went till 11, but I don't know for sure.
So Greg, can I, thank you, I want to ask a clarification. Do, can we still vote on the noise ordinance adjustments that are in front of us?
Absolutely.
And then come back and address, if we need to, the park?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have to do that at the same time. I just want to be sure we're not.
Highly recommend approval of the waiver. Stipulate, agree with Councilmember Wuhusky, it's summer, it's the chance we get to shine on the weekends, and of course, highly advise if that related approval is needed that you, but you can't do it tonight.
Thank you.
But you approve it.
And the, yeah, the park use ordinance does say, no person shall be within any city parcel, picnic hill, the specific closure at 10 p.m., but no person will be in any other parts between 11 p.m. and 6 a.m.
Okay, so we'll have to address that next time, right?
Kind of inherent with allowing a band, I mean, somebody will be there, but probably should be addressed.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding the noise ordinance, the adjustment that's in front of us from Snowfest? Okay, seen on, Jamie, you're up.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
No.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to D, which again is a noise ordinance waiver request for Two Rivers Fish Derby at Walshfield Friday, July 16 through Sunday, July 18 until 11:30 p.m. on only Friday and Saturday of that weekend. They want to waive the provisions of, again, Sections 9-2-5B to B regarding the noise audible within the enclosed structure used for residential purposes and Sections 9-2-5D pertaining to vibration. You've got that in front of you. It's on page 125. That is the one that Bonnie cited, that it says in here, we'd like to request an extension. However, the entertainment on Friday and Saturday nights are scheduled to play until 10:30. We would like a request to extend the noise ordinance, however, to 11:30 on both nights just in case. I think is probably the reason why it's on there.
If the council approves the waiver as presented, it would be regardless of whether it's the band playing or your cousin Louie talking loud at the edge of the parking lot, it would be waived until the time, you know, cited.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that request as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Adam, any discussion regarding the fish derby request in front of us?
If it's determined that a waiver of the park use ordinance on hours is also required, that'll be in front of you next Monday.
Yes, I would say we've got to be consistent there. Thank you, Greg, for calling that out. Any other discussion?
The question, Mr. President.
Glad, Mark.
Chief, how are we going to monitor, because I know we had problems with the location on the river in terms of vibration. The noise decibel is easier to manage. I mean, if somebody calls complaining on vibrating, I mean, how are we going to do that? What do you mean?
Well, actually, with your approval tonight, it wouldn't be an issue at all because you'd be waiving that portion of the ordinance, so it would be a non-issue.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, seen on, Jamie, we got a roll call again.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie, and it's great to have the fish derby back and have more events going on in Two Rivers this summer to bring people here. Number E, permission for overnight camping in Parking Lot 5 on Beach, use of portable fire pits on Parking Lot 5, the Catamaran Racing Association of Wisconsin and the Shota Peach on August 6 through 8. We believe last year we gave provisions for them to be able to park there and camp, right?
Yes.
So that's kind of, what they're asking for is the same thing this year. So I'm looking for, first of all, a motion to authorize the request by the Catamaran Racing Association, and then we'll get into discussion. So do I have a motion? Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy. Discussion regarding this request for the Catamaran Racing Association.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mark.
We did this last year. I went down and looked at the location and the people, and everything I saw, they were neat, well behaved, and very appreciative that we allowed them to do this. They have some very expensive boats and equipment that were parked right next to their tents, and that was one of the reasons they wanted to be able to be close to it and secure the equipment. It brought a lot of activity. Unfortunately, the weather wasn't good on one day, but it was a great event. So the question I ask is, I don't think we had any problem with this last year, did we?
Terry, feel free to come up and address that if you like. She's shaking her head no. For those on the camera, the parking rec director is saying no problems last year.
It was a wonderful event. The people, and they usually move it around each year, or, well, they have various regattas. They love Two Rivers. They're coming back. It was a feast for the eyes if you were in the area. A lot of people enjoyed it. And the city attorney and I are looking feverishly to see if anything else needs to be waived here. But I would also note, because the park use ordinance got modified slightly in the recodification, so from the Old Testament here to the new version, Jack, help me out, there is provision that the...
Get closer to the mic, please, Greg.
I'm sorry. There is provision that the hours, the restriction on hours can be waived by action of the city manager or council. So if there'd be no objection, I would be more than happy to take care of the waiver on park use after 11 o'clock for the two previous items you approved. And likewise, it's kind of inherent in this one, if you give permission for people to sleep overnight, that they're gonna be there after 11:00. But if, I can take care of that, too, it appears.
I would, I can ask real quickly from the council, do you guys have anybody of heartburn with not allowing Greg the opportunity to go ahead and make those changes? We already approved the noise ordinance adjustments, so to go ahead and make the adjustment to the ordinance regarding the park activity beyond 11:00? Anybody have heartburn with that? And it would save us time next meeting, so we're all okay with that.
A letter will go out granting the approval inclusive of that waiver.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
Last year, we had to do a little digging. It wasn't clearly reflected in the minutes, but both Terry and my recollection is ultimately the ability to place the portable fire pits with placement, with review by the Fire Department, was authorized. But that was up on the asphalt, not on the beach. I don't think, I don't know that we've ever given permission for bonfires on the beach. That's kind of a slippery slope once you start doing that. But they're essentially requisitioning the Parking Lot 5 for private use. And we, obviously, if there was, like, damage to the pavement, we'd want to recover that. It's like, you know, we don't normally have carnival rides in the parking lots until it's beach bash. Well, in this case, yeah, they're obtaining it for their private use. Okay? Any other discussion?
Yes, we have a roll call again. Let's go ahead and do a roll call because of the overnight parking. I want to make sure everybody here's out there. We're gonna do it or not do it.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie. I threw you a curveball. That was gonna be an all in favor. Let's go to F, resolution, again, for budget amendment to the 2021 police and fire capital budgets to account for planned investment of the bequest from former council member James Totti. You guys recall last meeting we had, both chiefs came up and presented how they were gonna spend the bequest that was given to both departments. And part of that happened to be tied to capital projects. In order for us to make that adjustment to the capital budget or the budget amendment, we have to vote on that tonight. So that document's in front of you on page 149. It has the details of what the Fire Department, as well as what the Police Department, will do for expenditures and what will be capital in the capital budget. Is that correct, Mr. Buckley?
Yes. Mr. Bush, our finance director prepared this reflecting an increase in the dollars budgeted for donations, an increase from $10,000 by the amount of the Totti bequest and the police, oh, excuse me, and the fire capital fund, and from zero to the amount of Mr. Totti's bequest, $73,899 in police capital, and then increased their respective capital outlay expenditures. It may not fit perfectly, but generally under the heading machinery and equipment. And fire, that's spot on. In police, it's really a variety of machinery and equipment, plus, you know, a dog and training and supplies. But, yeah, it's a one-time capital-type project, even if a dog is not a capital good.
So we're looking for a motion to go ahead and approve that budget amendment in both the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department's capital budget. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive reading and approve the budget amendment.
Thank you. Adam, do I have a second on this?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Darla. Any other discussion regarding this?
So am I, am I correct in looking, and I support this, by the way, but I ask a question. In effect, we're amending it, but we're increasing the budget by $27,500? Is that...
No. In police capital, there was an existing budget line item of $27,500. I don't recall the details, but four specific projects were approved in the budget. So the increase is $73,899 being added on to that.
In both cases, Mark, it was exactly what was bequested.
So reflecting then the donation of...
Yeah, I'm sorry. In both cases, yeah, there were existing, there was an existing budget for machinery and equipment. It's increased by the amount of the donation.
Seventy, okay, $73,899, okay.
Any other questions? Jeff? Yeah, I know, you said you were gonna be like $5,000 short on your end, Chief, from, for the, when you went through your presentation last week. Will that $10,000 donation today just cover that? No?
No, actually, we weren't short. We, that was funds that we didn't have allocated that was there just in case. We started the program this year, and we needed to augment the actual wages this year because that was not something that was budgeted for. So really, from a, from a equipment standpoint, I think we were at, I want to say, $22,400, I think is what I had on the presentation. Technically, there would really have been $23,897 or whatever the amount was. So there was a buffer there of about $1,1400, and then $5,500 in the K9. The $50,000 was allotted for the K9. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was assuming we were starting in July.
Yeah. It would be nice if that was the case, but, you know, it all depends upon that $50,000 match. So we're, we're $10,000 closer to it.
Thank you, Jeff, for the question. Any other questions? Okay, because this is a resolution, again, for the budget amendment, I need a roll call, Jamie.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, thank you, friends and family of Mr. Totti, and thank you, both chiefs, for doing what you are doing with the funds. Moving on to G, it's a resolution declaring May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. I'm assuming we're gonna have someone read us a resolution.
Chief.
Well, yes. Yes. So let's, first of all, let's go ahead and do a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Darla. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. And we can have discussion, but let's let him read it first, and then we can have discussion after if there's any questions, okay? Go ahead.
We just have to put a little plug in. I think every week should be Fire and EMS Appreciation Week. Just throwing that out.
So you want us to do this every week?
Well, just make it for 52, and then...
I'll stipulate that it is. Every week is.
Is that one special week for the chief, too, or not?
No, no, no. The guys are the important people. They actually do all the work. So, all right, EMS Week Resolution, designating the week of May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service to all residents of our community, and whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas, access to quality emergency care drastically improves their survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, skilled dispatchers, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 21, 21, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With this year's theme, this is EMS, caring for our communities. We encourage the community to observe this week and throughout the year with practice, with participation in the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Chief. Any discussion or questions for the chief before we do a roll call?
I have the experience of riding in a vehicle, watching that, and moving. It's amazing what you do. And I support his great thing to do, celebrate the week. But we have seven days. Can we do anything, seven, it's a special tip every day on how we can ultimately prevent that EMS from even going out of the building? Is there anything we can do to be proactive to stop it before they cast? The great service, they save lives. But can we use it to make seven tips of what's most common happening in Two Rivers so we can prevent them from even leaving and do one a day?
Sure. Would you like me to give them to you now? Or would you like me to do, post them somewhere?
I don't know what, whatever you think would be most effective. And I, just the concept, I know, you know, obviously...
It might be better to post it so everybody, so people can see it.
Yeah, but it'd be kind of nice if we celebrate the week, celebrate the people who save lives, and same time, take this as an opportunity seven times to help people not have to have the vehicle pull up to their house in first place. That's what I'd like to see.
Perfect. Sounds great. We will do that for you. We'll post it on our City of Two Rivers Fire Department Facebook page.
Okay. And can we then link it to the...
And we will share it to City Hall.
Okay, great.
And the Rec Department while we're at it, because I have administrative...
And at the meeting, maybe we talk about once, the seven tips to save lives, or something like that.
It's prevention, which is, I think, what you're trying to say. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief. And I would like Jamie to do a roll call on this resolution.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Moving on to H, resolution expressing appreciation for members of committees, commissions, and boards who retired as of April 2021 or have ended their service during this past year. We have in front of us a resolution expressing that appreciation, and there's a handful of people that are listed. I'm assuming that that's gonna be read by you, Mr. Chief.
I will read it with your permission.
City manager, with your approval. Thank you, Greg. First of all, I need a motion to do the reading and then adopt the resolution. So do I have a motion on this?
I'll read it.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's go ahead and do a roll call first, and we'll let Greg read.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Thank you, Greg. You're up. Resolution expressing appreciation for members of committees, commissions, and boards who have retired as of April 2021 or have ended their service during the past year. Whereas, many hours are volunteered by the citizen members of committees, commissions, and boards, and whereas, the following citizens have volunteered for the betterment of the community and have recently completed their terms on committees, commissions, and boards identified. Corey Thuss of the Advisory Recreation Board, Ashley Wallish of the Advisory Recreation Board, Maggie Klinkner of the Advisory Recreation Board, Richard Langeman, Community, excuse me, Committee on Aging, Ned Gayet of the Library Board, Connie Loden, Plan Commission, Jerry Totti, Police and Fire Commission, Mike Canty, Zoning Board of Appeals, Jeff Gordon, Zoning Board of Appeals, Dick Klinkner, Zoning Board of Appeals. Whereas, it is appropriate that the City of Two Rivers and its citizens express their appreciation for the services these volunteer citizens provide, and whereas their efforts to promote public interest and improve the welfare of the residents of the community should not go unnoticed. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Two Rivers expresses its official commendation for their services, and be it further resolved, the city manager send a copy of this resolution to the retiring committee, commission, and board members as a token of official thanks and appreciation of this city council dated 17th of May, 2021. And again, with your approval, this will go out with letters thanking these folks for their service. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, all of you who served, and all of you who are serving, and all of you who will eventually serve. So thank you for that. It's, it's the citizens that make the big difference here. All right, let's move to I, city managers' appointments, speaking of appointments of committees and boards, and reappointments to boards, committees, and boards. So a motion to approve the appointments as recommended by the city manager. We have that in front of us. Greg, that's page number 152 in our...
Yes. And there are some vacancies yet. I'm still chipping away at these. There are seven left. I hope to, I'm not gonna wait three weeks. I hope to bring some more names to you next week. Want to get that done. I would note, the first one on the list, by statute, the Police and Fire Commission members are appointed by the city manager and don't require city council validation or affirmation. I'm proceeding with, with the, with Jerry Totti reaching the end of his term to appoint Jack Ghazala of Park Roads to the commission. You have a copy, sorry about that, my phone's dinging. You have a copy of his volunteer application, which was submitted, actually, in June of last year in your packets. He is a MBA, a Licensed Professional Engineer, former federal regulator with the NRC out at the Point Beach Plant, and retired Navy Commander. And Jack had expressed an interest in the Police and Fire Commission, Plan Commission, or Business Improvement District Board. So I am offering him an appointment to the Police and Fire Commission. Would ask for city council approval of a reappointment of two staff members to the Central Park 365. Wait a minute.
That's the Splash Pad and Ice Ring Committee now.
Yeah, I'm thinking these are the, these are the market, I'm sorry, I'm thinking these are the Marketing and Tourism Committee. Jeff, you've not been on the Splash Pad Committee. Yeah. And Elizabeth, you're on Marketing, Branding and Marketing. I'm sorry, that was a slip up by my office, but that would be reappointment of those two staff members to the Branding and Marketing Committee. You might remember when the council made that a permanent committee, we, I opted to recommend the two staff members for the shortest appointments in case there were a lot of citizens interested and city staff could stand out of the way. So that should indeed read Branding and Marketing Committee.
Not Planning Committee, Greg?
Not the Planning Committee for, no, specifically, we don't have any staff that sit on the Central Park 365 Planning Committee. They are support to it, and that would be Elizabeth and Terry, myself, and, well, not from the city, but Roger Russo from Main Street. No, that, that is an error. That should be the Branding and Marketing Committee.
When we make the motion, we'll make the motion with that adjustment there, because we have to approve that one, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you have the other seven. When will we see those seven?
I'm hoping you'll see the majority of them next Monday. I'll add that to the work session agenda.
Okay, that would be good. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the appointment. Right now, it's Jack, and we didn't have to approve that one, but of reappointing both Elizabeth and Jeff to the Branding and Marketing Committee, and then we'll hold tight on the remaining vacancies. So do I have a motion to approve those two appointments with that adjustment on this piece of paper to Branding and Marketing?
No move.
You see, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. And any discussion?
President, why don't we take this opportunity, committee listening, we need a community development authority opening, help Mr. Buckley.
Yep, thank you.
We need a committee on aging. We need an environmental advisor to add to the board. We need a planning commission member. We need Central Park 360, great opportunity to be in that new development in Central Park. We need two of those. And we need a zoning board of appeals. We need two representatives from the community.
Thank you. And we welcome...
Call Greg, please.
Yep. Be in touch.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the appointments and the reappointments to the board committees? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes.
Mr. President, if I could mention, too, because I was a little flummoxed when we got to Agenda Item, whatever it was, Item B at the top of Page 4. What happened there? That ordinance amendment that was in your packet was a duplicate of the zoning code amendment that you approved following public hearing at the beginning of tonight's meeting. So it, it wasn't the appropriate enclosure on the fees. It was a repeat of that earlier one. And I, I failed to recognize what the devil it was.
The good news is we table it to the next meeting, so we'll address it then.
Correct. But that's, that's what happened there. You got the same ordinance amendment twice.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Let's move to J. J is resolution approving the project plan for tax incremental district number 14. That's in front of us as well. We talked about where the city would be able to support development of the northeast corner of Woodland Drive and State Highway, I believe, 310, and other properties located in the Woodland Industrial Park. So I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution that's in front of us, page number 153.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any discussion regarding this?
If there aren't any objections, Ms. Rungy might address just briefly what this is about.
Sure, she can do that.
Elizabeth?
I thought we were gonna go strong with that, Greg, but yes, I will do a very brief summary for TID 14. The goals and purposes of TID 14 are to continue supporting economic development within specifically the Woodland Industrial Park area. The driver behind this is someone who is a Two Rivers native, who is looking to expand his business and build new construction within the industrial park at the northeast corner of Woodland Drive and 310. So that was the driver behind this, but also the impetus behind creating this was because TID number five was also in this area, and TID 14 will continue to cover the Woodland Industrial Park to support economic growth within the industrial park, because it has been not as active as we would like. So this will be a good incentive to be able to identify this area as having TID tax incremental finance, financing available to those interested in building and growing there. So specifically to the developer looking to grow here in Wisconsin, in Two Rivers, I can speak to that. And specifically within the plan packet, I will direct your attention to the project-specific expenditures, which start on page nine, which begins with a cash grant to the specific developer. He will be building new construction and about a 12,000-square-foot building at the corner, the northeast corner. So the total grant that we've discussed with him, per later approvals with the development So the total grant that we've discussed with him, per later approvals with the development agreement, is a pay-as-you-go increment, tax incremental financing of $250,000. In addition to that, we've discussed with him a revolving loan fund, loan, that we've also just floated with him per our discussions. In addition to this TIF plan, is other cash grants that would be made available to other developers within the area should they decide to grow in this area. And so we've set aside $200,000 for pay-as-you-go incentives to invest in this TID. So all of those investments would come back before the council for your approval. Development agreements would have to be put into place for any further expenditures. So the cash grants in total for TID 14 are $450,000. So in addition to that, beyond those grant expenditures, we're looking at public project expenditures to support this growth and development, and that's on page 10 within your packet specifically, not the whole entire packet. But we look at stormwater management, which is required for future development, street lighting expenditures, electric service, sanitary, and water, water extension, which is, of course, necessary to grow there, any roadway expenditures, and landscaping, street, and signage, which I really do hope that we can improve our signage in this industrial park because that would be a nice amenity to improve there. So what we have is an estimate for public infrastructure improvements is about $325,000. And again, those expenditures would come before you for approval. $25,000 is estimated for administrative costs. As you know, TID financing does have some administrative, legal, and bond council expenditures that go along with it. We do have a pro forma enclosed in your packet that was done by Baird, and it makes assumptions in there for you to look at, but it looks at about a 4% cost for borrowing. It makes the assumption that we do the $250,000 pay-as-you-go to our developer who's looking to invest here. And in 2037 is the year that we would receive payback. That would be the year, because these are 20-year TID industrial grant, I'm sorry, industrial district, but it looks like 2037 is the projection for the $250,000 outlay, and it also makes an assumption for another expenditure of $325,000. So that kind of sums it up. We meet the test required by DOR for an industrial TID. So having said that, I mean, I think this is an important tool that we have in our toolbox for economic development growth, and so we, staff is just recommending approval for this TID for us to continue to support the particular developer that has come to us and for others that we hope to see grow here in Two Rivers.
Thank you, Elizabeth. That, right now, with, if the developer who's shown interest proceeds with his development, we can be fairly assured that there'd be enough cash flow to pay that $250,000 pay-as-you-go grant. Wouldn't be able to do much else. If further development happens, and it would be contingent on economic feasibility, then you could possibly be doing the borrowing or direct outlays for infrastructure, possibly assisting other businesses. Anytime there's direct assistance to a business through TIF, there has to be a written development agreement that comes to City Council and is approved by you. And the last step in the approval will be a joint review board meeting tomorrow at?
3:30.
At 3:30.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna just ask the clerk for clarification on something because we had a lot of resolutions and stuff. Do we have a motion in a second on this? Because we did, thank you, and then she explained it. So any other questions for Elizabeth? I just want to make sure I've got the sequence right because we've got a lot of these tonight. Yes, Mark?
Mr. President, I have a question. Elizabeth, assuming, you know, the TIF, we grant this, with the 200 is for potential other people, are we limiting ourselves by putting a cap at 200? If we had somebody potentially who had a worthwhile project that we want to invest in, and they wanted pay-as-you-go 400 instead of 200, can we raise the 200 potentially? Or why do we cap it at 2 for other potential? I guess is my question.
I can answer that and then Greg. Please chime in. Is this working? Please chime in.
You're good.
We did just, we had to make an estimate as we're required for these plans to identify cash grants, and we just put that in the pool for extension, but I believe we can adjust that number.
Yeah, if it was significantly beyond the 200,000, I'd suggest it would create the need for a project plan amendment, so that'd be the process. Where Plan Commission would do a hearing, Joint Review Board, Council Action. You gotta pick a number somewhere, and this plan pretty modestly said, okay, this initial project, which we think is going to be a $1.25 million spend, probably will only assess it more like 950 because that's the way the world works when it comes to project cost versus assessed value. And then we assumed at three-year intervals, three more, $750,000 projects as far as tax base. That seemed a fairly modest proposal. If we get something significantly larger, the thing to do would be to pursue a project amendment, which, an amendment to an existing plan with good timing and the legal notices appearing when they're supposed to in the paper, you can do it in about 60 days.
I understand. I guess not the original person who's building this, that launched this TIF requirement for it. I'm talking about a new candidate completely.
Right, right.
The 200,000, we could go back and do a project amendment.
Could do a project plan amendment to allow for additional grants, additional dollars spent on grants.
Okay, thank you.
But it would be under the provision that we're looking at what that development is, plan is going to be. If it's going to be like you just cited, a million, two, we would analyze whether or not we're going to raise that or not raise that based on what they're doing.
200,000 only. This is an additional figure for future...
Understand.
That's why...
We are saying the same thing.
Okay.
I'm just trying to say it a different way, but...
Likewise, if we're fortunate enough to have enough development that would support additional infrastructure extension, oh my goodness, we have to put another street in. Be a great problem to have.
Sure.
A project plan amendment could address that.
I don't want to cap the flexibilities.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other discussion? Well, we got Elizabeth still at the podium. She's gonna run away otherwise. Okay, seen none, we got a resolution approving the project plan for the TID number 14. Jamie, you're up.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Let's go to K, which is Resolution Creating a Tax Incremental District Number 14. I'm trying to figure out what the difference is, but a motion to waive the reading and adopt that resolution as recommended by the Plan Commission. That must be the difference. That's in front of us, that's on package number 190, and that gives a little bit more details as to the placement of, I think that's the TID district that's outlined there?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yeah. In essence, the first ordinance, excuse me, the first resolution they approved was on the project plan, which is the spending plan, the components Elizabeth talked about. This one's more global, what are the boundaries of the district, various findings that are required by statute as to what the TIF is intended to do. As Elizabeth had mentioned, Point D on page two, that the total equalized value of all of our TIF districts plus number 14 doesn't exceed 12% of equalized, et cetera. So this, yeah, always have to do two on these.
And this was recommended by the Plan Commission. So do I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Jeff, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion regarding this resolution in front of us? Seen none, roll call, Jamie.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Thank you, and let's move to L, which is to schedule public hearings, and there's quite a few of them, so it's gonna be an interesting evening that night, for the application for the conditional use permit to operate a small wind energy system in the I-2 industrial district at the Woodlands Industrial Park, submitted by Ian Slager. I think I said his name right. It said how he said it.
Correct, Slager.
Thank you. Slager Holdings LLC, doing business as All Energy Management. He's the buyer, and the City of Two Rivers, the property owner. The second public hearing is for ordinance regulating the storage canopies. The third is for zoning code text amendment related to boat sales, service, and storage in the B-3 business district. The fourth hearing would be for an application for conditional use permit related to continued operations of Patsy's Mobile Highway 42 Mart in the B-1 business district at 816 22nd Street, submitted by Patsy, how do you say her last name? Wallish? Wallish, property owner, and, oh my gosh.
The buyer.
And the buyer. I don't want to, I apologize in advance if I...
Gentleman that I know, some of us know as Lake, who is the operator of the Sea Store Gas Station on Mishkot Road.
Okay, it's the LLC, is that Lipi Lake? Lipi Lake LLC?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you. And the fifth one, yes, there's five public hearings, zoning code text amendment related to permitted signs in business and industrial districts. I'm looking for a motion to set the public hearings for each of those items on Monday, June 7, 2021, at 6:00 PM as recommended by the Plan Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Darla. Any discussion regarding these five potential public hearings?
Just have one quick question as we think about three weeks from tonight. Mr. City Attorney, if we have some invited guests that probably would be thrilled with all these hearings, but if these are posted for six, which is the start of the meeting, and the council gets to them by 6:05 or 6:10, that's still okay, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, because I'm here to tell you, if somebody shows up with a generous donation in support of the police dog program or anything else, or our two new employees, if there aren't any objections, I'd like to get them in first, but then barrel into the hearings. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion regarding this? So this is easy. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Greg, number 12, for information only. Do you want to go through that?
Yeah, this is, of course, a five-Monday month. Normally, we would move the council work session to that fifth Monday, but that being Memorial Day, we got a work session next Monday with numerous items based on the discussions we've had tonight, and no meeting, of course, on the holiday, no meeting the week of the 31st. The Board of Review meeting, which will be basically to convene elect a chair, vice-chair maybe, officers, and then vote to reconvene in August, will be held next week, Wednesday, May 26, at 4:00 PM here in chambers. And looking ahead, the next regular council meeting, three weeks from tonight, 6:00 PM, June 7, with a slug of public hearings.
Thank you. Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, if you would, please.
Mr. President, if I may...
Sorry.
I'd like to ask Mr. Buckley, great, I'd like to invite as a special guest in an upcoming meeting, the developer-owner of the new arboretum...
Oh, sure, John Durbrow.
...to get an update, and, you know, I hear a lot of exciting things about that. It's a great addition to our community. A lot of things are positive going on there, and I'd like to bring, and again, share with the community. And secondly, I'd like to tell everyone in the community that this coming Saturday, starting at 8:30, is a cleanup day. So if you've got a green thumb or you're willing to help out a little bit, meet out at the new arboretum and help them with the cleanup process. I've got a wedding, so I'm going to leave early, but I'm going to be there at 8:30, give them a hand, and I encourage anyone else in the community, give us a hand. Cleanup.
Thank you, Mark.
We can check too, if John Durbrow has that listed on the arboretum Facebook page, maybe we can share.